Now starting, all attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Westford Planning Board for Tuesday, March 11th. A few housekeeping comments first as we prepare to conduct this board meeting via GoToWebinar. This meeting is being recorded by Westford Cat. We respectfully ask that everyone mute their computer microphones and phones when they are not in use to avoid unnecessary noise during the meeting. This is an open meeting, so for all of the panelists whom have access to the chat panel, I would like to remind you not to use that function to discuss any of the content of the meeting, but to ask a question or any technical issues with the video conferencing platform and please direct them to the organizers. All votes will be done by roll call. All attendees are muted upon arrival into the meeting platform to reduce unnecessary sounds from disrupting the meeting. If an attendee wishes to contribute a question or a comment, they may virtually raise their hand via the platform's control panel, and the chair will recognize and unmute the participant where they can voice their concerns similar to approaching the microphone at a live meeting. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the questions function. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate section. Due to limitations of the platform, attendees that are accessing the meeting via the telephone number at the bottom of the agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you do not have a webcam, in order to fully participate. Attending the meeting today are three members of the Planning Board. I think there's actually four of us, four members of the Planning Board. Also joining us are the Director of Land Use Management, Jeffrey Morissette, and Assistant Planner, Sierra Pelletier. Matt Salem is also assisting with the IT functions and pulling up relevant plans and documents. And I think we're ready to go. Okay, I, you know, do know that, you know, we're all in the middle of kind of a workday here. I am sure all of us have hard stops by 10:00, so in order to make sure we get through all this, I'm going to ask that we move with some pace. I do intend on, you know, opening up these general business items. And first, there may be some applicants in the audience, but I was first going to ask if any Planning Board members have any specific questions and would like to hear from the applicant. And if the answer is no, I just intend for us to move forward, be efficient, take the vote, and move forward if that works for everybody.
I do have one quick open forum item, Dylan.
Sure, please.
So really, as you know, we are in public hearing right now for a number of the zoning bylaw amendments. One of those is the drive-through restaurant. As part of the drive-through restaurant outreach campaign, there is an online survey. You can get to it from the westfordma.gov town website on the homepage. I believe it's also linked on the Planning Board page, but it's westford.mass, westfordma.gov/drive-through-survey. We ask all residents to provide their responses once and only once, but this is your way to express whether you want or do not want drive-through restaurants, and to express your concerns and your guidance as to how you want the bylaw structured for controls. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I was unclear on your directions when you said, "Does anybody have comments?" Do you mean on any of them, or as we go through individual ones?
As we go through one by one, I'll basically, you know, oftentimes, we will go to the applicant first. We usually go to staff then the applicant, but what I plan to do is ask staff if they have any comments and then actually go to the board first to see if any specific questions they'd like to have the applicants address, just in the interest of expedience.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go into the general business part of the agenda for today. And the first is Item A, which is a Sweetwood Place subdivision. There's a request to release all lots from the covenant. Let's go to town staff. Jeff, do you have any specific comments we should consider on this?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair. So recently, someone was trying to sell their home, and a closing attorney brought up the fact that the covenant originally intended to prevent conveyance of any of the individual lots had never been released. And of course, Sweetwood Circle has been developed a long time ago, and we do have benefit of an as-built plan, and it was accepted in 1998 as a public way. So we think it is fully appropriate to release this covenant at this time, given that all the lots are occupied and have been for quite some time.
Okay, great. I was able to take a drive-through there. That's actually down the road from where I live, and it certainly looks like a completed subdivision to me. But as long as the town is satisfied and engineering is satisfied, I didn't have any concerns. Go to the board. Does the board have any questions regarding this covenant release?
I don't have a question regarding the covenant release. I do have a comment. I guess hearing what I've just heard, I am concerned if we are putting covenants on developments, and it sounds to me like there have been some lots that may have conveyed, because I can't imagine we have had any conveyances in over 20 years. So why is it that this attorney was the first one seemingly to catch this? That's my only concern.
I don't, I don't have an answer. I do know that closings are being more scrutinized nowadays as they even five years ago. So it was brought by, you know, an acute attorney, and so we just want to try to correct it, because obviously, the purpose of the covenant has been satisfied, given that all the lots have municipal utilities and they're all occupied, so.
Yep. Okay.
Like he said, it's just, we found that there was a short time span where things were in a kerfluffle and weren't done to completion.
Okay. All right, so if there's no other questions, is there a motion on Item A, Sweetwood Place subdivision release for the covenants?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Board release all lots in the Sweetwood Place subdivision from the covenant.
Second.
Jeff, do you need anything else with that? Are you good?
No, we will have council take a look at this. We'll let you folks know when it's good for your signature, because we'll have other documents for you in the future, so.
Got it. Great. Okay, so there's a motion and a second, I believe. So we'll do the vote. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. Excellent. Okay, moving on then to our second item. Under General Business, number B, or Item B, PB 2120, and A and R for Pollyanna Lane and Sixth Fletcher Lane. We'll go to staff first. Jeff, any comments on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So we do believe this plan is entitled to receive A and R endorsement, and we would suggest that the board authorize staff to sign on behalf of the board. However, on this particular A and R, none of the others, we would ask for a little latitude. There is the possibility that this particular layout could show or create a zoning violation, and we just want to give the latitude to have a possible adjustment to one of the lot lines to remove that. It doesn't affect frontage. It doesn't affect any of the front or side yard setbacks. We just want to have that flexibility if the board is so willing, and if not, you could just approve it as is. So specifically, if you look at the lot on the left that shows the garage, it is possible that they might need a slightly greater setback to what is the rear property line. And even though it still warrants endorsement for an A and R, we would prefer to correct that if needed before we actually have the plan endorsed.
So it would go slightly to the right?
A little bit. Just satisfy potentially the rear yard, and we're going to work with the building commissioner on that. We just hate having a plan go to record if a little tweak could eliminate a potential zoning violation.
And it means R-factor stuff with that Jag in the other lot?
Actually, they don't have quite the same problem, because that would be a side yard setback there. So it's much less restrictive than a rear yard setback.
No, but I'm just saying, the funky shape of the other one, does that mean, you know, that we have that R-factor calculation? Does it?
That was examined, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so then to the board in general, do, I mean, Kate, you're already asking some very good questions. Are there any, does anybody else have specific questions on this A and R endorsement?
No, my question just got answered, because I was looking at that as we went from the side to a rear setback, and it looked a little funky. But I've heard what I wanted to hear.
Okay, well then, given that, would anyone like to put forward a motion on PB 2120?
I move that we accept the A and R for Pollyanna Lane and Fletcher Lane. Where's the wording? And but make no determine with respect to compliance with zoning. Is that sufficient? We go, I need to?
Second.
For PB 2120.
All right. Does that work for you?
Yes, does that give us the flexibility if we want to slightly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With the, yeah, with the giving latitude to staff to make an administrative change to slightly adjust a lot one.
Thank you. All right, is that, can I get a second on that?
I had seconded, second.
Yep, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right, great. Okay, we are moving ahead then to Item C, which is PB 2121, an A and R for Hartford Road. Request for endorsement of the A and R to facilitate multiple lot line adjustments and support the Colonel Roll subdivision. I'm not sure, hopefully, everyone had a chance to see a note from Mark Slager with Allen Engineering. And I would ask that, you know, when we put the motion forward, we do include the, I guess, the total area in the motion, and that that total area appears to be 49,105 square feet. Jeff, is that right?
Right, Mr. Chair. So we had requested, I don't know that we could require, if we provide the area value for the easement. We think it's informative and useful, certainly, once the easement is conveyed, because we suspect, once this plan is recorded, that'll be referenced when the easement is granted. So we thought it would be useful to have the area on the plan. The applicant had already plotted the Mylars by the time we made those comments, so they have no objection if we add the area value to the easement on the plan.
Okay, great. Does anyone on the board have any questions that they would like to have the applicant address or ask of town staff?
No.
Okay, then, seeing none, then would anyone like to put forward a motion for PB 2121 for Hartford Road?
I move that we approve the request for endorsement of an approval-not-required plan for PB 2121 Hartford Road to facilitate multiple lot line adjustments plus an easement, utility easement, and that the board does not make any determination with respect to compliance with zoning.
I have one suggestion, Kate, just in alignment with the previous motion, to use the word "accept" as opposed to "approve."
Okay, that we accept.
And I would, yeah, and I would ask that we, you know, friendly amendment, that we say maybe something to the effect of the sum total of which is 49,105 square feet of area.
Accepted.
Okay.
Do you want town staff to endorse on your behalf?
Oh, yeah, and that we authorize town staff to sign the A and R. Do we have to do that? We didn't do that for the last one.
I don't remember.
We did not, so when we're done with this one, I'll go back to the other one.
Okay.
We could just do that as a blanket at the end for all of these today.
Jeff?
As long as there's a motion, clear motion, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's, we'll do a cleanup at the end, if that makes sense, and we'll just put that motion forward at the end, and it'll cover all of these. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, I believe. Yeah, Bob?
Yes.
Seconded?
I did, Bob.
All right, all those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right, moving right along. Okay, next, we're on to Item D, which is PB 1834. The Helena Crocker Residences at 60 Littleton Road, there's a request to install a temporary sign. All right, so first, town staff, Jeff, any, any comments on this one? It was pretty straight ahead. It seems like they just want to erect the temporary sign while they wait for the permanent sign to be finished.
That is correct. They are willing to keep it in good order, and if the building commissioner determines that it creates any temporary nuisance or becomes unsightly, that it be removed. If the board recalls, you granted an extension to the signed special permit until March 4th, 2022, I believe, and they are simply asking for this placeholder sign until such time as the permanent sign can be installed. It would go in the same location as the approved sign. And Attorney Robbins is on a plane at the moment, so they're not here to speak to this effort, so.
But it's same location, same dimensions, yeah?
It may be, it actually may be smaller. It's, it's just going to be cited in the same location.
Okay.
Understanding is, the individual being honored would, is feeling some urgency to have something there in the short term.
Understood, understood. Does the board have any questions on this one?
No.
Yes, Kate?
Jeff, can you convey to Attorney Robbins and her client that one small correction on the sign?
Of course.
Future home for 18 seniors dedicated to a woman that, would you make it to a woman who? Because she's a person.
I will relay your recommendation.
And I think this is exciting, that it looks as though there's potential, that there's starting to be forward progress after so many years. And it's nice to know that the land has been conveyed over. I did, it, I think you relayed my question when I read about the the land transfer in the Westford Eagle. It said that they had only purchased unit five, so it's not that they purchased one unit in it. It's that they've purchased the parcel of land that gathered.
Okay. If conversation is complete, then is there a motion on PB 1834?
I make a motion that we approve the request for a temporary sign for the Helena Crocker Residences.
Second. Motion, need anything else on that, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, and I'm just scrolling to get to the next item in my tablet here. Put a lot of substance in this one, Jeff. Okay, there we go. All right, we're on to Item E then, which is PB 2122. Maori Indian Market at 6 Carlisle Road, request to authorize administrative review and approval for a change in use from professional office to retail sales to the general public. Jeff, any background here?
No, sir. The commissioner reviewed this in terms of parking, potential differences. I don't believe it even equates to a single parking space. However, it does technically require review for change in use, and the commissioner hopes that you may consider administrative review and approval to authorize this market. I know the applicant is here if you have specific questions about the nature of the business.
No, I think, well, for me, anyway, the nature of the business was clear. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
No, I think it was very clear what the nature of the business was. The only thing I was surprised by was that the previous dry cleaner was classified as a professional office as opposed to retail sales, and that was.
That was exactly my question.
Yeah.
Did we miss something in a previous change, or is there just an odd way of how you classify dry cleaners?
Don't have that answer for you, but I can certainly discuss with the commissioner after a decision.
Yeah, this is fairly simple.
I thought about it, because they're not, I mean, it's retail, but they're not selling something. They're providing a service.
Yep.
So that's probably, it's a business, not a retail.
Yeah, to me, it struck me as it still is very transactional, in that somebody's probably not in there for more than five or 10 minutes at most, as opposed to with a, with a professional office, you think somebody could go in there and be in there for an hour or two hours at a time. I don't know, so, but nonetheless, you know, without getting into those weeds, does anybody have?
And there's lots of parking, and there's lots of parking spaces, so that's not a concern.
Right, agreed. So then, if nobody has any further questions, is there a motion on PB 2122?
I'll move that we approve PB 2122, 6 Carlisle Road, request to authorize administrative review and approve for change in use from professional office to retail sales to the general public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jeff, you, you're good on that motion?
I am, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right.
And good luck to the.
Yes, good luck. Okay, we're on to Item F, PB 2123. Another administrative review, this time for Western Valley Marketplace, 160 Littleton Road, Unit 19A. There's a request to authorize administrative review and approval for a change in use from retail sales to the general public to professional office. Jeff, looks like there's a realtor that would like to occupy part of a space that will be subdivided to facilitate two new businesses. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. It's vacant space next to Karma Restaurant.
I might be familiar with that establishment. All right. Okay, did anyone on the board have any questions?
The only question I have is, what's the approximate, what's the occupancy of it going to be as a realty office? Because I think as a mattress sales outlet, it had a fairly low volume of customers and salespersons at any one time. And I'm only concerned regarding parking.
So I do believe we have some folks from that real estate office who will be able to, from a practical standpoint, tell you what the maximum occupancy might be based on past experience.
And before we go to that, Jeff, I'd also like to understand what the parking calculation as a whole for that development is. We kind of have to look at an allocation of spaces and how they're allocated across the existing and planned uses. So it's kind of a two-part question there.
Okay, the second part is definitely going to be more difficult. But what I will tell you is that we're talking about a finite amount of square footage. And if we go to Appendix D, parking requirements. So if it was retail, it's one space per 180 square feet versus, let me see, professional office. It's one per 200 square feet, so there's a 20-square-foot difference. So you would need, I don't know how much square footage, do we have that map handy that shows the square footage of?
1,758 square feet, according to the Wilder Plan. I'm looking at it right now. It seemed to me with that bullpen, we could have a fair number of realtors in there. I'm guessing, let's say, on average, you might have six or eight. And if you get four cust, two or three customers, separate cars, that was my only concern. Just, I just, I don't have a concern that we're going to overcapacity the parking, but at some point here, I've got, I think we need a strategy how we deal with these shopping centers in terms of how many spaces we're allocating and what's left in the bank, so to speak.
Well, fortunately, mostly a daytime enterprise, whereas Karma is mostly nighttime, so.
And that works in that favor, but I just think we do need to have some kind of management on this.
So I understand the concern. I think in this case, we're talking about perhaps, according to the Appendix D, we're talking about perhaps one parking space difference.
Yeah.
Maybe one and a half. I don't view that as substantial in terms of the overall project. It would be administratively burdensome if we were to carefully track and monitor the incremental impact for every single change of use. You know, for the entire project, that would become a burden, honestly, just like it would be a burden for tracking the sign square footage.
Yep.
So I don't know, the board may want to consider that, but I guess, big picture, if the plaza owners who manage this are comfortable with it, and it creates, you know, a minor issue, you know, at some point, they're going to have to address that amongst their respective tenants. But I defer to the board, of course.
I guess, would we, we, we want to go to the applicant to ask questions, Bob, or?
I'm fine. I just, just wanted to mention that, because.
Yep, yep, okay. Anybody else, yeah, yeah, anybody else on the board have any questions or concerns for the applicant? No?
No.
Mr. Chair, we did receive one question from Eileen Boylan, who's with the Wilder Company. She said the occupant load was 16. Just wanted that in the record.
Occupant load was 16, okay. All right, thank you. Given all of that, is there a motion then on PB 2123, administrative review for a change in use for 160 Littleton Road, Unit 19A?
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right, we are moving into the last item on the agenda, Item G, PB 2124, an A and R for 22 Griffin Road. Request for endorsement of that A and R plan to divide one lot into a smaller lot and an unbuiltable parcel. Jeff, any background we need to hear on this one?
This was the subject property where the town did have the right of first refusal. After a lot of public input, I believe the town declined their right of first refusal. What you have before you is an A and R that's a precursor to a future project, a future subdivision. And what this does, it takes the one existing lot, and it makes it a slightly smaller lot that would remain buildable. It does create what would be considered an unbuiltable parcel at the moment, potentially to be used in conjunction with budding lots. But the proposal before you is simply to carve off a parcel unbuiltable from the existing large building lot. We do believe it is entitled to A and R endorsement.
Okay. With that, does the board have any questions on this A and R request? Yes, Kate?
I have two questions. I know you say we had the right of first refusal, but it's still the same property owners who owned it back when we had, when we refused it. And so now they are subdividing their own property into two lots. That's why I'm wondering if they then subsequently go and sell these lots. It's actually a new sale. So I'm wondering if that then triggers a new right of first refusal. My second comment is, I see two lot lines on this plan. I see that, if you look on the right, I see the one. I see the, if you look on the right, I see the, the one that ties off into the entrance on to Old Lowell Road. But then on the left side, I see, I see another line that goes out to Griffin Road. So to me, it looks as though there are, they're carving it into three lots, not two. So if that, if that, if those two lines on the left are not, because they actually have dimensions, if they are not part of this, then they need to be removed from the plan.
So Kate, are you talking about the triangular shaped lot at the top left?
I'm talk, no, I'm talking about the trapezoid on the lower left.
I think those are showing, I don't know if you can.
That's not an existing lot.
Are those setback lines, Jeff?
I thought they were, let me look at the plan. Yeah, Kate, those are showing setbacks to property line.
I have the same question, Kate, and I, and I.
Because it's not clear then from this plan, what's, what's a lot adjustment and what's, what's something else?
So Kate, the one thirty-two five, one thirty-two point five feet, that's just showing the setback to the property line. That's not a lot line, and so too is the two hundred.
How can you tell the difference between a lot line then and a setback line?
Well, the lot lines have bearings and distances. Those do not. And those are.
And the setback lines have, the setback lines technically have arrows, but it's very hard to see them on the, in the, in the packet.
Yeah, can you scroll to the right then?
So parcel B.
Okay.
What they're carving off from the existing lot.
Okay.
And all the other lots in the plan are existing.
Okay, all righty, I'm confused, but that's okay. I see, I can see it better now, thank you.
I didn't have time to color it up for you, Kate.
All right.
Doing my due diligence.
Any, yeah, you are, any other questions on this, Bob or Mike?
Guess in following up on what Kate had asked, if I understood this package right, it appears that there are two owners involved in this, not one.
So. Well, I don't have the eight, I don't have that part of the packet in front of me at the moment, but we did check for owner authorization that was double-checked by my staff. So all that is required to make application is all, you have the signature of all property owners necessary.
I guess I was just trying to understand, I, I understand the Western Riding Academy Trust. It was the George Allen letter that confused me.
The George Allen letter, okay.
Yeah, that, that they authorized to shame.
Right, so that's why I'm asking, are there, is there two owners already of this property? Or what's, what are we, what are we approving there?
He's the petitioner, so he's a petitioner, he's requesting this under the authorization of the owner.
But there's, there's to be two owners.
No, I think what Mike is suggesting that there's a petitioner or an applicant, and an applicant can make an application if they are the property owner or if they have owner authorization. And I think Mike is suggesting that is the case in this instance.
Okay.
I believe he's correct.
But it, they both say alteration of my property, so, so it looks as though they both own it.
Well, regardless, we, we have their written authorization for the application.
Okay.
But I, I still, I still question whether or not if they, if they subdivided it before it sold, if we then have to go through the, and take it out of sixty, chapter sixty-one, do we have to? Does the town still have right of first refusal?
Well, the only question before the board this morning is, is this.
I know, I know, I'm just bringing it up. Put people on notice.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on this? Okay, is there a motion on PB 2124?
I move that we. What do you want me to use, accept? The, accept the request for endorsement of an approval not required plan for PB 2124, twenty-two Griffin Road, to divide one lot into a smaller lot and an unbuildable parcel, and that the, second, that the board, planning board does not make any determination with respect to compliance with zoning. And third, that we authorize town staff to endorse the plan for the planning board.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Window stain.
And, and I say aye. Okay.
To go back, I would like to go back to Polly, Pollyanna and make an additional no motion for PB 2120 that we authorize for Pollyanna Lane and six Fletcher, that we authorize town staff to endorse the plan for the planning board.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. We included the endorsement into both Hartford Road and Griffin Road, so I believe we're good there.
Yep.
All right. So I think we've come to the end, there's nothing under correspondence, reports and updates. Does anybody on the board have any items they'd like to bring up here at the end of the, the meeting? Jeff, anything from staff?
I just want to thank the board. I know this is an extra, but it really does make a big difference to some of these folks who can either sell their property or move forward on a project, and it lightens your agenda. And then most exciting, our assistant planner, Sierra Pelletier, started yesterday. This is her first week, she just got emails, so we don't have visual yet, but you'll be seeing her at future meetings, and we're very happy to have her.
Excellent.
Welcome, Sierra.
And congratulations, yes. Awesome, all right. Well, we did pretty well, we're forty minutes into the meeting, and I'd entertain a motion to end the meeting.
So moved during the planning board meeting of eleven May.
So move, I mean, second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
And I say aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, see you next week.
Bye.